I'll call the meeting to order. You have the role call?
Yes, I do.
All right. And we'll please stand for the invocation by Rabbi Guy Gernsy and the Pledge of Allegiance by our Council President Josh Adamson.
Thank you. Father, we give you thanks and praise for all your mighty works. You are loving and good and gracious. We thank you for our city. Thank you for our elected officials, the businesses, the churches, the families and the individuals that make our city the great place that it is. I pray for this council meeting tonight. Give the council members wisdom and guidance since they deliberate on the items before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. We bless you in the mighty name of Yeshua. Amen.
Okay. It's rock and roll. Hey, the first order of business is the Greater Bandon Association's Volunteer of the Month.
It sounds like the microphone's on.
It does. Sounds like it's turned up.
Is it too loud?
Mine sounded too loud.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members and Staff. It's my honor to present the Greater Bandon Association Volunteer of the Month Award for July to someone whose quiet dedication and strong leadership have made a real difference in our community, Wade Troxel. Wade and his wife Sharon moved to Bandon in September of 2022. After retiring and relocating from Texas, Wade spent 30 years with Target Corporation, most notably leading a major distribution center in East Texas for 22 years. I can only imagine the merchandise that came home. He's also a graduate of United States Naval Academy. Served our community for six years as an artillery officer in the United States Marine Corps. During his first year in Bandon, Wade volunteered at the Bandon Marsh National Wildlife Refuge. His love of the outdoors and bird watching continues to keep him connected to the natural beauty of our region. Wade's impact truly shines through his leadership with the Friends of Bandon Parks and Rec Association or Rec Association, not Association, Friends of Bandon Parks and Rec. He serves as Executive President and Treasurer. He previously served on Bandon's Parks and Recreation Commission and has played a key role in many local events and initiatives, including serving as major project manager for the second annual very well-attended bike rodeo at the Ocean Crest Elementary and coordinating Friends of Bandon Parks and Rec's participation in the school's health fair. He also played a major role in organizing the group's Cranberry Festival activities and recently facilitated the donation of playground equipment to the Bandon Youth Center. Wade helped secure funding from the city's revenue sharing program to help support the mission of Friends of Bandon Parks and Rec, enhancing parkland and recreational opportunities for our residents and visitors alike. Calm, good-natured, and always insightful, Wade Troxel brings heart and thoughtfulness to everything that he does. We are fortunate to have him in Bandon, and I'm delighted to recognize him as the Volunteer of the Month Award. Seeming a plaque from the Greater Bandon Association. You're welcome. And gift certificate to Winter River Books, because I know they've got some books there about bird watching. But congratulations, Wade.
The next presentation is a proclamation to Holy Trinity Catholic Church, and I'll read it, and then we'll have Father Anthony come up. Whereas Holy Trinity Catholic Church, known affectionately as the Light by the Sea, has served as a spiritual, cultural, and charitable cornerstone of the Bandon community since its founding in 1883. And whereas for over 140 years, Holy Trinity has provided a place of worship, education, fellowship, and compassion to the people of Bandon and the surrounding areas, extending its mission beyond its sanctuary to touch lives through outreach, service, and community support. And whereas the church's enduring presence is a testament to the generations of clergy, parishioners, and volunteers who have nurtured its growth, upheld its values, and kept the flame of faith alive on the southern Oregon coast. And whereas on this day, July 13th, 2025, Holy Trinity Catholic Church breaks ground on a new house of worship, one that will serve current and future generations honoring its past while embracing the future with grace, resilience, and renewed purpose. Now therefore, I, Mary Shamahorn, Mayor of the City of Bandon, on behalf of the Bandon City Council, do hereby proclaim July 13th, 2025, as Holy Trinity Catholic Church Day in the City of Bandon and urge all residents to join in recognizing and celebrating this historic occasion in appreciation of the church's steadfast commitment to faith, fellowship, and community. Proclaim this seventh day of July, 2025. Okay, the next items are the consent calendar items. Does anyone have anything that they want to discuss?
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved by Josh, seconded by Madeline, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? I guess the minutes and miscellaneous are part of that also, even though they're...
Yeah.
Okay. Now we're under old and new business. 5.1 Teamsters Local Union Number 206 Police Collective Bargaining Agreement for Fiscal Year '25 and '26 through Fiscal Year '27, '28. Who's... Are you giving us a report? Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilors. The city's completed negotiations with Teamsters Local 206, representing our police and administrative officers. The contract period for this agreement is July 1st, and it runs through June 30th of 2028. Included in the proposed agreement are cost-of-living adjustments to wages, a new wellness incentive, and an updated meal reimbursement schedule. We're also requesting that you authorize a city manager to enter into administrative changes throughout this agreement. And that's about it for it. Let me know if you have questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Motion to authorize the city manager to enter into the agreement and make administrative amendments for the duration of the agreement.
Second.
Then moved by Madeline, seconded by Jerry, to approve the Teamsters Local Union Bargaining Agreement. All in favor? Unanimous. Now, the next one is 5.2 Request for City Council Authorization to Enter Into a Contract with Johnson Rock Products. And I looked through this, we go through this every time. But I looked through here, and the recommendation is that one motion is to accept the quote, and then the next motion is to award. And that's what we need to do.
Correct.
Do we have any... So does somebody want to talk about this?
We will have Tim Leakey.
Okay, great.
Public Works Director.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. So February 25th of '25, catastrophic failure at the end of Portland Avenue by the old Free Flight. We lost the culvert. We've already gone through permitting and archaeological review. We went out to bid. Johnson Rock was the only contractor to bid to repair it. So with your blessing of approving what's recommended, then we can schedule in the work to be completed.
So it's not sole source? They were just the only one that bid?
Correct.
Okay.
I thought it said there were two bids in here.
I thought it did, too.
To my knowledge, we only had one bid.
Or maybe one complete bid.
Yeah.
Because I think Bear's right. I think it said that one wasn't a complete bid.
Two quotes were received and reviewed by the city. The Dyer Partnership, based on the review, submitted the lowest responsive and responsible quote. So apparently something was wrong with the other one.
Right.
That's what I'm getting.
The Dyer is just the engineer.
Right.
Right.
So then I need a motion to accept the quote.
Motion to accept the quote.
Second.
Been moved in, seconded by Madeline and Josh, to accept the quote. All in favor? Unanimous. Now we need to award.
Motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Johnson Rock Products Incorporated in the amount of $84,216 for the Portland Avenue culvert and slide repair project.
Second.
Been moved by Madeline, seconded by Jerry, to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Johnson Rock Products. All in favor? Unanimous. The next item, Community Development Block Grant Application, Community Center Facility Upgrade. I guess this is Christine.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. The city is currently in the application process for a Community Development Block Grant. We are working closely with consultant Lehi Dowell, the Deputy Director of CCD Business Development Corporation, and he's joined us via Zoom tonight. The objective of the grant is to secure $1,490,000 in grant funding for the Bandon Community Center upgrade. The community center was originally constructed during World War II, and last upgrades were made in 2008. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to seek approval to submit the CDBG application and to seek authorization to conduct community engagement activities to solicit community input on the project. Proposed improvements to the community center include siding and roof replacement, new HVAC system, interior and exterior door replacements, ADA accessibility upgrades, bathroom remodel, interior and exterior painting, parking lot resurfacing, and landscaping. Our community engagement strategy includes four components. The first is facilitation of an open house and information session composed of an informal event with drop-in Q&amp;A engagement, renderings, and budget information provided. The purpose is to educate and collect feedback. Next is the creation of a focus group workshop. Targeted invitees include senior groups, youth leaders, and nonprofits. Focus would be on design needs, accessibility, and priorities. Next is the implementation of an online survey developed and managed by CCD Business Development Corporation. Goals include measurement awareness and support, identify improvement priorities, gather feedback on access and design, and recruit planning committee members. And lastly is the creation of an ad hoc committee, planning committee, composed of one city representative, one public member appointed by the mayor, one design team representative. And the roles would include advisory input on design, facilitation of transparency, and community alignment. And this also supports the CDBG citizen participation criteria. The total project cost funded by this grant is estimated at $1,490,000 to be paid with CDBG funds. No local match is required under CDBG, so long as the project does not exceed $1.49 million. It is recommended that the City Council approve submission of the CDBG application and authorize city staff to implement the proposed community engagement strategy as outlined herein. Again, Lehi Dowell is here with us on Zoom, and we're happy to take any questions you may have at this time.
Have there been any quotes that have gone out for these renovations? That means that we came up with the total?
Right. Technical engineering is actually working on a quote right now. There's some estimates that are already on the staff report there.
Okay.
And they're doing an updated one.
Is there some kind of timeframe for these things happening? It's pretty nebulous on here.
Yeah. Lehi might be able to help with this a little bit more. I think that the grant application is due in September, and it would be awarded in December. Lehi, do you have more information on that?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking my call. Yeah, I can help. Christine, you did a great job, by the way. So you covered my job pretty well. So yeah, so we have... The first part of this is the application process for the final design, and that means that we will apply for this grant at the very beginning of July. Right now, we're in the process of doing the intake form, and then when we get the official recognition from CDBG that we can apply for the full application, we'll do that. The application will take approximately 30 days to complete. We will have the application completed by the end of August. And at that point, we are entitled to a technical review, which is where CDBG comes back and tells us anything that might be missing in our application and ways to strengthen it, which is a really important milestone. Personally, I do not submit CDBG applications unless if we hit that milestone, because it's really free information for us. So once we get that technical assistance review returned, that'll happen in the first or second week of September. We modify anything, we strengthen the application, and we do a final submission by September 30th. And then Christine is correct. They will take approximately 60 days to review all applications that have been submitted and give a final verdict to everyone who applied in the month of either early December or late November.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Other question?
The building incorporates the senior center as well, right? Or is that separate?
Yeah.
No.
Just the same building?
Same building, yes.
You haven't been...
I'm not a senior.
You're the young kid, you and Archie.
Sorry.
Are there any dates for like the community engagement and the survey form and all that? I didn't see them in here.
Yes, the survey is now ready to go and ready to be launched. So that'll be within the next week or so that we'll start the survey. I think the in-person in-house meeting will probably happen at the end of this month, by the end of July.
And then we've got to form an ad hoc committee. Who's doing that?
Yeah. So the mayor would be appointing someone from the public, and then probably myself would be on that committee, and Lehi, and I'm not sure who else at this point.
Okay.
So you would be the city's representative?
I believe so, if that's what...
Sure. Yeah.
And Mayor, just to butt in really quick, there is a question on the survey asking people if they would like to participate on that committee. So you'll have a list of folks who would be interested.
That's great.
That's good.
I move to authorize the city manager or designate to submit an application for Community Development Block Grant funding in the amount of $1,490,000 for improvements to the Bandon Community Center and authorize the city manager or designate to develop and implement a community engagement program for soliciting public input on the project, including but not limited to the following: hosting two community engagement activities, posting an online survey form, and forming an ad hoc committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Josh, seconded by Madeline. Or you will see the motion in writing. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
So what do you think the chances are that we might actually get funded?
Yeah.
I served on the State Community Development Block Grant Committee in Salem in 1985, and so I know there are a lot of applications. There's bound to be a lot of applications.
Right. I'm going to defer to Lehi on that. Do you know, Lehi?
Well, you can never guarantee anything, but certainly they did not have a spring round 2025. So the fall round in 2025, which is in September, will be extremely competitive, for sure. They do divide CDBG into a couple of different areas. The two largest are community building projects and also public works projects. So we have not seen how they're dividing. I think they have about 11 million. Normally, it's about 70% to public works and probably 30% to community buildings, and then about 10% to different smaller categories. So that's why we always try to get everything ahead of the ball. I have 100% success rate. I probably shouldn't say that in front of everyone, but I'm excited, and I think the project that you guys have lined up is extremely important. And that's why we're going after community engagement to get as much input as we can.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Stiff competition.
Yeah. Okay, the next item on the agenda are public comment time, and I believe we have some people signed up to speak.
I don't know. I'm holding my handwriting. The English accent. My name's Neil Bolo. I live in Bandon. I would just like to say I love the fire hydrants in Old Town. Yay, fire hydrants. That's it. Hopefully, that's going to continue throughout the city, but they look really good downtown.
Okay.
Thank you, Timmy.
Are they new fire hydrants, or they'll be painted?
They were painted.
Painted.
Okay. I was wondering, we didn't have fire hydrants in Bandon. All of a sudden, we had fire hydrants. That was a little worrisome. Okay? Who else?
Start my time, Tony. Good evening, councilors and mayor.
Good evening.
My name's Darcy Grehec, and I live at 53701 Beach Loop Road for 35 years now. I've owned and operated Stillwater Natives Nursery for six years. I admired your method for improving the TSP, the Transportation System Plan. This work pays off, the work that they did. The TSP serves as a blueprint and a vision for transportation system development in Bandon for the next 20 years. This update improves TSP through the following bullet points: Assesses existing and future conditions of Bandon's transport. Addresses a need for more connections. Discusses specific needs and solutions. Addresses challenges. Manages new development and tourism. Includes near- and long-term projects. And includes an implementation plan for funding and financing projects. That's such good stuff. It was so effective. Is it possible we could use this symbol as the TSP to address stormwater issues in the city of Bandon? I've shared a flyer with you. I'm here to talk about green infrastructure and how it is used to strengthen existing practices and utilities. In neighborhoods, rainfall coming off of sidewalks and driveways in permeable surfaces is diverted into a removal system. The accepted formula to calculate the roof is for every one inch of rain and 1,000 square feet of impermeable surface, about 620 gallons are generated. Then times it, times the amount of rainfall. If we use six inches as an extreme atmospheric river event, each home would generate 3,720 gallons of water into the stormwater system during that event, multiplied by the number of houses in the neighborhood. And you realize it is an incredible amount, hundreds of thousands of water rushing along and excavating stormwater drainages, also known as creeks. There is a better way to slow and treat the storm. I'm here today to share that flyer and the information about a new grant source of funding from the state of Oregon to create a master plan for a system that improves how stormwater travels from neighborhoods to indoor creek solutions. I want to share this flyer with you because there is an open window for this funding. No much funding between October, December of 2025. If you look at the 23 recipients for the first round of funding, you will see our town would fit into the same demographic that was funded. Please consider the successful approach you used with the TSP and the funding offered here by the state to make a plan for success on treatment of stormwater in Bandon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darcy.
You'll see that the city manager gets this. We have other people signed up?
McKay's Mound?
Oh.
Oh. Left mural in Coos Bay.
Yeah, I've seen it.
Been doing murals for 30 years. Three of them in Coos Bay, this one here at the food trucks on Front Street. Finished, and then there's one by the chip pile of a long 200-foot wall that's a ship with towboats pushing it out into the channel. And 30 years ago, a ship and four towboats on the Shark Bites Building, Odd Fellas Building, Coos Bay. And so I'm just finishing up the mural on 11th Street in the old flower shop. I've been working in architectural firms and currently run a landscape design firm. Helped design Bandon Boardwalk back in the days with Krol Clay and the Coos Bay Boardwalk. And so I'm a designer. And this here on McKay's, McKay's has approved of a mural like this. I've got my permit into the planning department, and it's up at El Cog now, with in the sign permit section. It's not really a sign. And so, but that's where it stays in Bandon. And it exceeds the linear footage on each street, but there's exceptions for murals. So just hoping for the best. And so the manager in Coos Bay McKay's, there's 11 different McKay's stores on the west coast here of Oregon. And one of them in Lincoln City has a mural of kites. They have a kite festival there. So they've got an identity for people that are traveling through and of themselves, which they're very proud of. And you know, Bandon's got an identity of cheese, dairies, cranberries. And so the old flower shop mural is iconic in that Circles in the Sand is becoming quite an attraction. Face Rock has always been an attraction. And the golf course is probably the biggest attraction around. So I covered the visual and recreational icons of Bandon, and I think this one here will give Bandon its identity of the economic history of the dairy business and cranberry business. The mural represents cranberries at the entry, Cranberry Bog. And I want to get this done by Cranberry Festival here. I'm sure it'll be a photo op. And the 101 side of the building is 120 feet long and has six 10-by-20-foot panels in between the vertical bond beams. So it's a farm-to-table story that, you know, I have a little history in there. The milk boats carrying cans up the river and back down the river from the Coquille Valley. The creamery business and cheese business was how this place got started, really. And so there's no real identity that I can tell in as you travel through Bandon that this is our economic engine, a historical economic engine. But we still have cheese here, and we still have cranberries. So it's a storytelling, and the panels can be seen through a windshield at approximately 30 miles an hour in about three to five seconds. And it's not a distraction, but it's actually a still-frame movie as you pass through. And you may or may not say cranberries, cheese. And then, lo and behold, a few blocks later, there's a cheese place and there's Cranberry Sweets. So I'm working on raising money. I'm hoping like in Coos Bay, the Urban Renewal Agency paid for the chip pile mural of the ship and the towboats completely. Because the mission of Urban Renewal Agency was to eliminate or reduce blight, industrial blight. And in my perspective, concrete block walls are not attractive. They're very businesslike. But it's a beautiful place to declare our identity of Bandon to people that are passing through. I have begun asking Bandon cheese people, Face Rock, Cranberry Sweets, and the golf people. The mural up by the old flower shop does have Whole 17 on it, and they love that, as well as the Circles in the Sand people. And Face Rock is just Face Rock. So I'm wondering if there is any facade improvement programs, such as Coos Bay's. So I'm wondering if there is any facade improvement programs such as Coos Bays, or I don't think this is in the Urban Renewal District, but is there any other mechanisms that can match some fundraising that might be needed to pull it off?
Well, I was under the impression from the city manager that this was going to require a vote of the council as to whether we were even going to permit this. Now, so I'm confused. Has it been permitted? Do you know the?
Oh, no, this, I'm talking about McKay's.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Oh, no, the, the permit has been put in and sent to El Cog.
Yeah, but it is more than a sign. Because I, the city manager talked to me about it before he left, so.
Usually, it would just be a type two.
So it, so, but you haven't gotten the permit back from?
No, it's just been in a week.
Okay.
So it's up in Eugene, El Cog, and they will say what?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't know what they're going to say.
No, I'm, my purpose is just to introduce the concept to the council. So you're not out of the loop.
Right.
Yeah.
Was this something that McKay's came to you about, or did you come to them?
I, I was working on the, the Circles in the Sand and Face Rock and Banden Golf, and I wanted to do Cranberry Bog on the end. And the owner said he didn't want anything but ocean scenes. And so I looked beyond the building, and there was this big, beautiful wall next to McKay's entry. Cranberries. So that's how that happened.
Okay.
And both managers approved the idea. So I'm going about raising the funds and trying to beat the weather window to the Cranberry Festival.
What is the total funding needed?
Well, the last murals, this was 15,000. Before that, the weigh was 18,000, and the ship mural was 20. And this is 180 feet in all. So it's liable to be, if I can do it, raise the money around 40 grand. And so I will work with whatever I can raise to pull it off.
Okay. Well, it's going to have to come back as an item, because we obviously can't vote on.
Oh, no, 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 I just.
And I'm wondering if it should come back, because I know Tori would want to weigh in on it, at least.
Yeah.
From what he told me, he would.
Right. Yeah.
So I think we could put this on the agenda for next month. I don't, you know, I don't know if you would.
Can you make a note of that, June? I am. Thank you.
I've been on city council up in Coos Bay, so I know the courtesies.
So now, was this McKay's idea, for example, the two, the two dairy animals, was that their idea or yours?
No, that was completely my story.
You approached McKay's, did you not?
Pardon me?
You approached McKay's, or did they approach you?
He approached them.
Oh, I approached them, yeah. Yeah, after I did the sketches.
Okay, so they didn't have any input in it?
No, not at this point, but the manager loves it and says, you go out and do all the footwork, and then we'll be fine. And I told him it could be up to $40,000. They may end up paying half of that or a quarter of that.
Okay.
Whatever, whatever we can generate and develop.
Okay.
Let's see if the permit comes back.
Yeah.
So then I guess we'll put it on the agenda for next month.
Yeah.
Great.
The one, the only concern that I would have is that this is, this is at the most dangerous crosswalk. It now has, it took us years to get a flashing light there. And there, the, the man, the one fatal accident that we've had in the last few years occurred at that position. And I'm just worried that if people try to take all of this in, they are not going to be watching the crossing. And we went to so much work, years, to get ODOT to put that lighted crosswalk in. So that would be my concern, but nobody else has any concerns. So anyway, we will have it on the agenda for next month, and that will give the city manager an opportunity to weigh in.
Great. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Did the mural for the port at Lori's Building, did that come before the council?
No.
I don't know.
No.
I don't think so.
No.
But I think he's, I think the city manager felt it was more than a sign. It's not really a sign. Well, even.
Right, well, the one down there was a mural as well, so I was just wondering why this one would be coming.
I don't know. He.
Also, if that one didn't, because usually.
Maybe it's not going to come before the council. Maybe we'll wait until what happens at the planning, the planning commission level.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, Kami. She's the written letter that was given to you. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Kami Buonis. I live on Natalie Way. My comment is related to the pending map amendment request from the Ocean Terrace Phase Four landowner to rezone approximately half an acre from natural resource to residential. The requests may come to you in the future, and with the recent departure of both the planner and the planning director, I want to be sure the following information is captured. A summary of emails between the planning department and landowner indicates the owner started formal subdivision of Phase Four in 2018. They asked about establishment of the NR boundary and wrote that the designation basically rendered the property useless. Four years later, in 2022, they wrote, "We are looking now at a 10-lot subdivision if I can convince council to return the line to the top of the bluff." The owner continued to refine their design and ended up seeking approval for a 15-lot subdivision, knowing their rezon request would be a separate action and would require a future public hearing, with no guarantee it would be approved. In November of last year, the landowner submitted a schematic showing building footprints and lot sizes to prove all 15 lots could meet setbacks and be developed with the NR boundary in its current location. In other words, approval of the subdivision was not dependent upon his own change. In February of this year, the city granted administrative approval for Ocean Terrace Phase Four with 15 lots. The Planning Commission held a public hearing related to the map amendment request in April. Staff addressed the history of establishing the current NR boundary and stated the related ordinance file is missing. This is the only ordinance file missing from planning records. The landowner may argue this lack of documentation is enough to declare the current boundary invalid. Their application states the line was drawn in error, but people familiar with the site and local geology believe conditions warrant the boundary as is. The owner went from saying the zone renders the property useless to having an approved 15-lot subdivision. So clearly, the natural resource zone didn't have a negative impact on the landowner. However, to move the natural resource boundary from its current location would most likely have multiple negative impacts on city park ownership along Johnson Creek. Slope stability is vitally important to protect park resources and to help manage stormwater runoff. Please keep this front of mind in any future deliberations concerning the proposed zone change. A copy of more detailed excerpts from the emails I mentioned is on the backside of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this probably going to come to the council, or what's the, what's the history of this?
So at this point in time, the representative of this project reached out and wanted an opportunity to retain legal counsel. I have yet to hear from that legal counsel, so that's where this stays at this moment.
Anybody else, June?
I have nobody in person. Is there anybody on Zoom? No, she's shaking her head.
Hey, we'll have the city manager pro tem comments.
I wanted to thank our Public Works and Tim Leakey for doing such an excellent job preparing the city for our Fourth of July activities, including the fancy fire hydrants. And we have received a lot of positive feedback from all the events of the day. So it sounded a big success.
Good.
Anybody else at the table? Shayla, do you have anything? You've already talked. You don't want to talk, do you? You want to have anything to say? Okay.
Good.
Bear?
Yeah, I'd like to say that I thought Fourth of July was a weekend was a real success. Town was crowded. I talked to a bunch of merchants. They all were very happy with the flow through their shops and the business. And both GBA putting on the Wine Walk and what else was going on?
Buy an ice cream.
Buy an ice cream, yeah. Just were huge successes, and people really liked that stuff, so.
Boat race.
The boat, the boat race was, they were.
Getting their own.
Forget the boat races.
Or the fireworks.
The fireworks.
Well, I didn't see the fireworks, so.
You did?
No. I'm not a big fan of fireworks.
Well, I'm not either, but I'm, I prefer the sanctioned ones to the other ones.
Hey.
We had plenty of those.
I like explosions. I was blasting Foreman one time, but, but no, I'm not a big fan of fireworks.
Good. Where were you when I brought that up? Did you help me and support me? Just kidding you. It seemed like I was all alone, sort of like the erosion on the bluff. Sometimes you feel like a loner sitting up here.
But anyway, it was, I thought the weekend was just great, and everybody I talked to agreed. So thank you, everybody who worked on it. That's it.
Thanks.
Following that, I can't get any better than that. But I have a few comments. The police department did a good job of keeping a lot of extra fireworks under control. The change over Moore Mill, a lot of people were concerned about that. I also did not see, it was not as bright coming from boards. But the biggest thing is, a lot of people said they did not see the fireworks or know where it was going. And I know, Mary, you put it in your column.
Three times, I can say so much.
Now on would be maybe we do a little advertising, and maybe the chamber could put flyers around town and in the hotels. Because a lot of people who've been here for years went to their usual spot. And they do read columns, Mary, but maybe they didn't get it all the way to the end.
Well, I'm the city manager. I believe he had it in his newsletter, you know, you can drink.
Actually, a lot of people don't read.
You can, you don't wish to drink, but you can't force him. I mean, you can leave a pourst of water, but you can't force him to drink, no matter how many times we explain it.
Next time, advertise it that it's, if it's going to be at the same place.
I've made an.
That's all I.
We do have a lot of tourists that come, so.
Yeah.
Pardon? We do have a lot of tourists that come.
Yes.
I've made a note.
Well, then they're not used to it anyway, so hopefully they'll.
Yeah.
They come, okay, that's all I have to say. Better than nothing.
I just want to thank our police department for having our officers walking into Old Town. It made a big difference. I had a lot of comments from people, how nice it was to talk to them. And they actually stopped a couple of people over here towards the docks from shooting off fireworks while they were walking. And very nice about it, explained to them why they couldn't and everything else. And I must say, our town was a lot quieter this year than last year.
It was.
I think our police department was, did a great job of keeping the peace. And other than that, yeah, the boat races, the parade, everything was great.
And I have a few things. The Coos Curry, the Coos County Area Transit District, it used to be Coos Curry, has announced that because of a lack of funding, they may be cutting back service across the county. For one thing, they won't be going to Florence any longer. They won't be going, I don't know why, they would go to Powers, but. And it also said they would be cutting back Banden from probably just Tuesdays and Thursdays. And I think it was from 10:00 in the morning till 2:30 in the afternoon. So it's a service that so many people depend on, and it seems, I believe they're having a meeting sometime this month. I have it in my column. I can't do it by heart, but they're having a meeting to discuss it. But if they, if they don't get additional funding, this will probably take effect in August, and it is going to have an impact on communities.
A lot of people use that to go to their doctor's appointments.
Yeah, I know. And also, on, on Facebook, there was, somebody had a brand-new car parked in the gravel lot across from the Fisheries Building, and someone was shooting off illegal fireworks and pretty much damaged the side of their car. It has big gouges and nicks on it, and they weren't particularly happy. And another woman, whose husband is the head of our, the hospital, the doctors at the hospital, she said that there were so many illegal fireworks going around where they were that she actually felt unsafe. So there were, there were, I know that it did help, it definitely helped to have the police walking around town. But in my neighborhood, for example, they were still being shot off at 2:00 in the morning. And I wasn't go out and, going to go out and argue with the guy, but yeah, 2:00 in the morning. So no matter how many times you urge people not to use illegal fireworks.
They're going to do it.
They're going to do it, I guess. Although one of the, one of the firemen, who was kind of in charge of shooting off the fireworks, we had a discussion on Facebook, I mean, on text, and he said, "Probably there's not going to be any arrests made until something major happens, like what happened in Crescent City two years ago, where a number of people were hospitalized when a huge group of fireworks went off on the beach, and it nearly killed a little boy, but it sent a lot of people to the hospital." And so then Crescent City took, I think they outlawed, if I'm not mistaken, fireworks, so. But I hate to see something like that happen before something's done. So Bear, I'm counting on you to help me next year when I bring up fireworks again. Thank you.
I will say, congratulations to our volunteer of the month. Thank you, everybody, for making this meeting tonight. Nice work by our city police, who did minimize a lot of the extra illegals that usually happen. And yeah, the Fourth of July events were well-attended. The fireworks show was amazing. And the new location wasn't really too detrimental to be able to see.
I can't see them from my living room anymore. I don't like it.
They did that on purpose, Madeline. That was on purpose.
I'm sure, you did it just for me, right?
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone in the public who showed up tonight. You know, this is a community event, so it's great to have community involvement. Thank you, guys.
All right. I guess, I guess we're done. It's not a long meeting. Thank you for all for coming, listening to us.